Good evening. This is the twenty-four July meeting of the North Beach Planning Commission. The agenda today is opening and then the minutes approval, the zoning director's report, and then we have one case for site plan, shops, North Beach, and then an update on the comprehensive plan. So move to the minutes that people already reviewed, or do you want to have some time to read through it? Comments?
Did you hear us?
I'm here if you can hear me.
We can. Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
There we go. Did you have any comments on the posted minutes from last meeting?
I do not.
Okay, I don't have any edits either. I'd need a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I move that we approve the minutes for the meeting of Thursday, May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, as written and submitted.
All right, all in favor? Do we want to shift gears and jump to the site plan, or do you want to go ahead and give your reports?
Since we had a late start. Yeah, so the staff report is based on the shops.
Okay.
This project previously came before you. The June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. Very similar design, was slightly larger. The proposal now is scaled back version of that. Basically, in the same footprint. Does not have a full two stories. Everything else is in, is in the report, the location, a lot of information, none of that has changed. As far as public works and planning zoning comments, this would be just for approval of the development plan itself. It's approved. Scale down version approved, it would then have to come back for a full category to site plan approval. With Periphery Commission's floodplain. Stormwater, all that. Or utilities, landscape plans.
Okay, so this is, yeah, this is to show us the new the slightly reduced concept, and then if that's a go, then they come back and run site two.
Correct.
Okay, or cat two, okay.
And Mr. Russo was here to answer any questions.
Okay. You don't have to present, I mean, we have it in front of us, if you want to talk to us about some adjustments, or we're good either way.
To refresh memory of those of you who were in the last meeting last year, this is what we approved of, what you'll read. And we tested the market, incidentally. But the shops is just the, the blue version, as you see, this is another old building sometime in the future. And the market just cannot carry it. The costs were tremendously higher than we anticipated. The second story of this building was an atrium, so there was no revenue generated on that second floor, because it was all open. Probably a little bizarre, but it just didn't work. We have plans that I can show you the scaled version.
We're in next page.
Well, it's considerably, considerably scaled back. We had approximately twenty-two thousand square feet in that first version of just the shops building. Now we have I think it's about thirteen thousand six hundred square feet. So it's considerably scaled back. And what we did, we still have two-story building at the front on the Bay Avenue side. And it's two stories, and after the end of the whole, how's the restaurant on the first floor, and two of fourteen fourteen, not seven hundred square foot restaurants, and I beg your pardon, offices on the second floor. Again, thirty-five hundred square foot restaurant on the first floor, and two offices on the second floor. What you see along the entire length of Fifth Street are seven small shops, fourteen hundred square feet apiece. Very much accessible by the public from both sides of the building, both from Fifth Street, as well as from the other side, which is the large parking lot, which will be also available to parkers. And then the site plan, which you don't have tonight, we'll provide that to you, will show access behind the building for parking. Again, it's two stories, seven, seven shops, about fourteen hundred square feet apiece. And we know there's demand for those, because people are calling us already. Family, it was, it was, did you post this in some public fashion at the meeting?
Just, just on our board docs on our website, yeah.
People called me already the last couple of days, that's very encouraging, didn't get a call too on that one. So that's, that's, and it's well within our budget in terms of the cost of construction. So if indeed we'd like to see it built, and we like to see it built, because we feel very comfortable about it. We appreciate your participation in terms of, oh, any questions?
How many parking?
Parking spaces are sixteen adjacent to the building, but then we have about a hundred and fifty on the other side, which is the large parking lot, which will also be there.
Steve, you had a question?
Yeah, the, I don't know which is the front yard and which is the side yard, Bay Avenue or Fifth Street. But for commercial use, the the front yard setback should be ten feet, and the side yard setback is five. So scaled this thing out, either on Bay or Chesapeake, you're at about five foot seven off the property line. So it's in compliance with the side yard setback, but not the front yard setback, whichever that may be, unless there's a request for variance in approval, I imagine.
What requires the larger setback?
I'm sorry, what requires it?
Where do we have the largest setback on the plan, on Bay Avenue or?
Yeah, on your sheet A, A-one-one, you show the property line in the face of the building. And so I'm looking at both Bay Avenue and Fifth Street. And using your scale three thirty seconds, it looks like you are a little over six feet back off of Bay Avenue, a little over five feet off of Fifth Street. And so the
What do you think the requirements are?
Sorry. You follow me?
I'm sorry, the question is, what's, what did you say the requirements are for both the, the front yard and the side yard?
Side yard is ten feet?
Yeah, front yard is ten feet, side yard is five.
Well, the question is, which is the front? The front yard, I suspect it's could be either Fifth Street or Bay Avenue, because the shops front on Bay Avenue, I beg your pardon, the shops front on Fifth Street, and the restaurant with the offices fronts on, on Bay Avenue.
What's the street address? Is the street address on Bay or Fifth?
Well, there's one on each floor.
On both?
Is the variance a time-consuming process of, what kind of rip?
No.
Well, section five dash one oh four, exceptions to lot size and bulk requirements. Is that waterfront? Or is that CM?
There is. And yeah, five-one-four. You can, commercial can be reduced to zero.
That, that's, that specific area is commercial? That's the commercial district, or is that waterfront Renaissance?
WC district, waterfront commercial.
But it just says, it does, it says it for any of them, where a side or rear yard lot line of a non-residential use coincides with the side or rear yard lot line of residential use, you have to abide by the residential, but when it, when it's commercial to commercial, it can be reduced to zero.
Yeah, it says required front yard setbacks will be reduced to the average of those existing setbacks. That's the first part.
There is no setback on Fifth Street, let's begin.
Well, it would be the block. So the
And that's the whole block.
Yeah, well, on Fifth Street, yeah, but not on Bay, on Bay, there's pink building.
Oh, yeah, side under five-one-four B-two, where a side or rear lot line of a non-residential use coincides with a side or rear lot line of another non-residential use. Those lot lines may be reduced to zero, provided emergency vehicle access and maintenance are addressed. The adjoining property is a compatible use, and the reduction is approved by planning commission.
So if the side is Fifth Street?
That's commercial.
That, that would be, that would be all commercial, so that could be reduced to zero.
Yeah.
But Bay is adjacent to residential.
There's no residential adjacent to it.
What is the
Cross from Bay, it would be to the right, there's, the right is a parking lot.
And residential.
Right, well, the front setback, there's, there's, it, the front setback, the only thing on the other side of Bay Avenue is the welcome side.
But in the same block. This, the same block there. The entire property is adjacent to a residential property. We're only looking at a segment of the property, but if we're to be considering parking on that adjacent, those adjacent lots that are part of this, then we should also be considering that it's adjacent to residential.
Well, it depends on which is the front or which is the side.
It does.
Fifth Street is the front.
Could you read that paragraph, give me that paragraph's number again?
Yes.
Um, hang on a second. Okay.
And the pink building is considered multi-family.
Okay, so, but he's coming in for a commercial permit, he's coming in for a site two, so he's not gonna, he's gonna have to answer what's in five-one-four, which addresses those concerns, when you're coming in with a commercial property.
Right.
Which would be sidewalk size. I mean, it walks you through all the considerations, so you, you can't hold him to a residential standard, because this is no longer, he's not doing the hotel piece. This is not residential, this is commercial.
This is commercial, yeah.
And that's what he's, he's
The hotel would be commercial, a commercial, a hotel is not a residence.
No, but the
So
Right.
It's a block in and of itself, right?
If we're doing the average of existing setbacks, the average of that, what's the average of?
Well, he's got, the, the way I see a commercial property, he's got, there's a lot of utility implications we got to deal with. We got public access to deal with.
Right.
The setback really isn't it, it's, he's gonna have to lay out the walks, the drives, the curb cuts, the utility runs, all that, and that has to come on, that has to come in that site permit.
Right, but before he goes into that, why do we, like, not say, hey, you're gonna have to look at this, so give that information to your architect, so they know when they draw up the site plan that they can't do certain things. You see what I'm saying? If we see an issue now.
But I, I think that's incumbent, when you look through what's required in a category two site plan, he's got to provide all that information.
Right, but if we can give a heads up that, like, hey, maybe, you know, I how far back do you have it on the front? If the front is Bay?
Hey, the, 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 we need to see with the scale line.
I can't see it either.
Six feet seven. But Rick, Rick doesn't, I think, I think you addressed this in five-one-four-two. Adjustment of front yard setbacks in the CM and W districts, of which this is, where a majority of the lots fronting the street block have front yard setbacks that are less than ten feet, the front yard setback may be reduced to zero, as approved by the planning commission. So what other lots are there on this block? On this block alone? Are there any other lots? I don't believe there are.
There's Mr. Russo's property in this block. If we're looking at Bay Ave. Bay Avenue is Mr. Russo's property, and then, what is that, Horizons? I can never remember the name of that pink building. Thank you.
What was his name?
Southside. Which is residential condos, and they're, like, really close to the sidewalk. So if that's the front.
But is it in the same block?
Yes.
I, I would actually be looking for this developer builder to have a little more walk around, because he's got commercial interest, so he's gonna have to stand back a little bit, because he's gonna want the curb traffic, and then obviously, there's some ADA considerations, et cetera, so I think. But we're gonna look at his property as he comes in, on this one, it's commercial, not residential.
I, I know that.
And I think Southland's your setback is five feet.
Yeah, they're, they're like right up against the side.
It may be less than five feet.
I don't think that that would comply for commercial applications, what I'm driving at there.
Is that zone?
That's, that's too tight, I mean, you, you wouldn't want
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm expecting him to have more workaround space, based on him being
Necessarily get that utilities, and that's our
Well, and that's what I'm wondering, there's a lot, there's a lot of, kind of co-mingled stuff there, so we'll have to take, I assume when you come in, you'll take a look at it, so if, I, I think your concern was if he's gonna be, kind of like, pushed up against it, but I as a commercial structure, we're not gonna let him do that on that permit. Because he has to access, it's different on that other building, right, on the horizon, it's just different.
I understand that. I don't
I'm not, I'm not understanding what you want to see today on this.
I just wanted to make sure that before you get to the point where you're actually paying somebody to draw up plans, that we can eliminate some of this. Okay. Do you still have the walkways? I see the porch on, on the Fifth Street side.
Way on both sides of the building, on the east end, I'm sorry, in the south and the north as walkways.
And ramps, you have a handicap ramp on Fifth and on the Chesapeake side. So my question is, I guess, I'd love to be able to see this overlaid, to be able to see the curb line, not just the property line, to sort of see the actual setback from the curb, and how much you know, this doesn't show city sidewalk or street lamps or anything like that, in terms of how much space there actually is between the building line and, let's just say, the edge of sidewalk. Which I'm sure is not, is on the other side of the property line, right?
Yeah, and that'll all be shown on it, that'll all have to be included in the category two site plan, with utilities, stormwater, parking, streets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I just think that this one oh four, five-one-four-two, kind of gives the ability to reduce the front setback.
Mm-hmm, it does.
Yep.
Steve, your information, you, you don't have this, but I do have a draft site plan here, but I didn't want to present, because it's not quite ready, but we have about twenty-five feet from the passageway on the south side of the building to the curb line, but there's a good, and that's for traffic that's gonna be passing west to east, because the traffic is gonna be parallel to Fifth Street. For access to the back of these buildings.
That's your driveway aisle, right?
Exactly.
Okay, and then that's entering on
Chesapeake.
Chesapeake and coming out on Bay.
Exactly.
Okay.
And our site plan will show that.
Okay, I mean, you've got it marked on here.
Oh, I do? Oh, good.
Yeah, there's, there's an arrow pointing that way, I was gonna say, so you're coming out on Bay, right, make sure I was looking at it right.
So in order to get compliant or approval from the planning commission for this reduced front setback, what do we as a planning board need to see or do, or can we approve it as it is?
Well, you don't have the site plan to know exactly what that setback's gonna be yet.
This is just a concept.
We do, based on the, based on the drawings that he's submitted.
Now, this is not a site plan.
Sorry?
Steve, this, it's not a site plan, it's a concept drawing, correct?
Right, I understand, but typically, when we do give an approval, we, we review the setbacks and make sure that they're in compliance before they go forward with the rest of their design.
Yeah, which is why I was bringing up the setbacks.
You know, I can barely make this out, but it looks to me like on A-one-two, looks like the setback on Bay Avenue is eight point six, or eight feet six inches.
I scaled that, and it's less than that, using the three thirty second, it's like six foot seven. It's on the Bay Avenue side.
It's eight feet towards Bay.
It shows that it it shows it eight foot to the center line of the column or the grid line, but not to the face of the building.
Yeah, there's a little bit sticking out.
Yeah, there is.
Into that eight foot.
So it's probably closer to eight feet than you said, maybe.
Yeah. I mean, six foot seven is what I came up with, based on the three thirty second scale.
Yeah, it's just that little bit of the, the bump out.
Well, it's the whole plane, it's the whole plane of the building. A little bit, you're right, it's, it's more the bump out, you're right, but okay, so back to my question, what do we have to do?
My recommendation is here, that we approve the development concept, and just put a note for him to make sure he complies with the five-one-four, and also that he addresses curb and gutter walkways. Which should all be outlined in the, in the category two site plan, but we're just highlighting that we're gonna be looking at, you know, how the building is relative in terms of movement around it, I think the setback, because he's commercial, we're gonna look more at, if you will, we'll pick up the setback based on egress and mobility. Which is what I think is the most important at this, does that make sense?
So
I'm more concerned about utilities coming in on that site plan, that's really where I'm, yeah.
Well, that's, that's your expertise, what, on the Chesapeake Avenue side, you've got that, the nice boardwalk with the steps up. Are there going to be any windows in that last retail space for the Chesapeake Avenue side?
Well, we don't show that elevation, so I can't answer that, but it seems to me that makes sense, for the windows there as well, as a matter of fact, I'm just here for information, this architect resides in Santa Fe, New Mexico, but he has an office here in Virginia, I've been working with him for some time, he's been doing hotels and larger buildings up and down the East Coast for years. And he even is suggesting, putting, not, I'm not suggesting that they're gonna do it, but in the passageway that goes through the middle of the building, the center of the building, putting windows there as well, on the side, on the side.
That
So I suspected there'll be plenty of penetration on this building.
Yeah, that, that would be good for security purposes, if nothing else, but aesthetically, it would, it would really be nice, it would also give those retail spots and extra display areas, and then on the Chesapeake Avenue side, when you've got people coming in that way, it would be nice to have windows there to to kind of draw them in, and give them some idea of what they're walking into, rather than a blank wall.
And for your information, when you go big or at elevation, it's at eight feet. Here, we're recommending eight point five, just to be a little bit, on the safe side.
That's good.
You know, Jennifer, once you bring up the the window, this is an open breezeway. Right?
In between?
Yeah, in between the
Yeah.
It's an open breezeway.
And the elevation for Fifth Street, it shows double doors on the, on the opening sheet A.
Yeah, but, so there's no, there's no glass on the back side, there's just doors and a open walkway.
Right.
So from that parking lot side, it's gonna be kind of stark. You're just gonna be looking at a one-story with a blank wall with presumably hollow metal doors. Not gonna be very attractive.
That's exactly as it is up in Prince Frederick, with the new shopping center that's being built.
I agree.
The one down, the armory space? Never been down there.
They're good, I don't think, or on that side, one side of the
Good point.
But that's them, that's, that's not us, that's them.
Then, I understand, it's not, not like it can't be done, it won't be done, but
Yeah.
I'd like to get your suggestions, and we'll, we'll, we'll kick it around.
Yeah, I didn't pick that one up, that's a good call.
There's a mural or something.
I mean, I don't know what you can do, you can't have glass all the way around all sides, it'd just be
Murals are a good idea.
Murals would be really great.
I mean, you look at most of your commercial buildings like this, the storefronts have storage in the back, they don't
Yeah.
Have windows in their storage rooms.
Yeah, yeah, murals back there would be really nice.
This isn't really a back, you know, it's kind of open.
Well, it is for the time being.
For the time being, but that's, who knows how long that will be. So from just, drive, driving in through Chesapeake Avenue, it's gonna be pretty, pretty visible. Driving into town, okay, the second issue I had is gonna be Driving into town. Okay, the second issue I had is going to be height. And, um, I think what you're going to be doing is calling this a copula that exceeds the fifty foot maximum height restriction. Uh, because you are
About four feet, four or five feet in an original plan.
So you don't, you don't, you don't, you say you've got like five feet, uh, at the lowest point from grade to your first floor. And to your roof line of the second story is forty three feet. And then above that, you got another twenty foot to the top of, I'm, I'm assuming you're gonna call this a copula because a copula is allowed to be uh, an exemption to the roof heights restriction. Is that correct, Rick?
It is.
So is that including? So is the cupola just the top section with the windows, or is that the whole thing on the second floor that's by the roof line?
I think you'd have to call it the whole thing because it's, there's no floor at that, at that roof ridge line.
Yeah, it's just aesthetic, it's not.
Well, I I did some math. Which I don't like to do. But, um, when I added up the fourteen point zero, well, fourteen feet zero, the twelve feet, eight inches, fifteen feet, four inches. And then the twelve feet from the eve up to the eve of the very top. Over to the right, it says just fifty four feet, it's actually, um, fifty four and two inches maybe. I didn't bring my paper with me. But it's not fifty four like it says on here. Two, two inches, it's fifty four and two inches.
What the tops out of fifty feet, doesn't it?
Yeah, that that couple is a twelve feet tall, so.
We need that extra little piece on top that we take it down.
I mean, the I guess you have to weigh whether that two or three feet makes a difference. As it being allowed to be exempt from, from the building height. Doesn't say that they can be, the ordinance says structures exempt from maximum building height. Roof ornamentation such as couples, widows, walks and steeples, it does not give a maximum or a minimum.
That'd be something we need to
It just says they are exempt. The following structures are exempt from the maximum building height restriction, doesn't sound like it gives leeway to say no.
We need to look at that in future.
And it lists roof structures for housing, stairways, air conditioning, similar equipment required to operate, maintain the building. Roof ornamentations such as couples, widows, walks and steeples, television aerials, mass satellite receiver stations, flagpoles, transmission line poles, monument and similar structures or theater fly towers are exempt. It's five one oh four C.
So what are we calling his base structure though?
That's just the roof, that's the top of the building, that's where the office space is, and then above that, on the two story is where the couple would be.
So what's his, uh, what's that zone restriction for height there?
Number two is fifty feet.
Okay.
And if you take that twelve foot off a couple, it's below that, it's at forty eight feet.
Well, you wouldn't have to take the whole twelve feet, like if you could just roof it where that top line of windows is, could it come in?
Yes.
Yeah.
Little section?
Yeah.
But
No, it's twelve feet from
Uh, from the crack, from the crest right here.
There to the to the, uh,
It's a beautiful ornamental piece, I don't know why you'd want to take it all.
No, we're not, we're just trying to get it categorized.
Yeah.
So where does your, what I'm asking is, where's your roof ridge, if you will, and then your, and then your cupola, so if, or rather the so if that, if you didn't have the, the nice ornamental glass piece, where would that roof finish?
Yes. Right for bridge right there.
Yeah, that's where I'm going, so that's, needs to be fifty foot essentially, and then the next piece is ornamental, which is excluded. That's, that's what I was trying to categorize that for you. Now, have they, my, I I did have one other question, which was and and I'm not, we still can discuss as much we want, I just, I had to jump in my head about the critical area, and you mentioned the elevations, uh, for your piling. Have we gotten any new FEMA maps or anything like that that's come in that we're obligated to?
Uh, yeah, there's nothing that affects us.
Okay.
There, that, that has, that lot hasn't changed.
Okay, that's what, that's what I thought, I thought, but I just wanted to check, because that, that would impact his, his work there, um. And we'll have to get that in, when you bring your site plan in, um, make sure you at least call out the type of piles and, and the, and the type of work you'll do with them, right?
It's heavily expensive these days, I mean, talking to the power drivers, they say prices have doubled, it's, it's
I know it's expensive, but my concern is, we got a lot of, uh, uh, public utilities there, and so driving as opposed to screwing and, and, you know, and vibing them in or, or caissons or, uh, we gotta, we gotta make sure, because you're gonna be driving piles right in a confluence of utilities. So we, we need to understand that when you bring that permanent. Um, I did have, uh, this is, it's a developmental concept, I'm sorry, we're asking you a ton of questions. Is, is this gonna be, is, are you anticipating, and we don't have to hold you to this, is this a single phase? Or do you think you're gonna, I mean, obviously you're gonna design it in case conditions allow you?
Designing, I've designed the shops, I'm designing the shops as you see.
Right, right, and that's what's in front of us, so. Okay, so it could be standalone if you choose not to pick anything else up. Okay, okay. Can you do us a favor on that, as you delineate your phase, your your, your parking lot, your rough parking lot, which is very popular, um. Can you just make sure we understand the reduction anytime there's another phase?
I'll do that.
That would be super helpful for
Fill the, the entire site.
Okay.
On, on the site plan.
All right.
Okay.
Because that, that's
I understand.
That's very helpful. Steve, do you have any more questions?
But we dropped again. Please have Trump.
I understand. So we're, we're gonna have to condense our conversation down to a few items, so we can move the applicant along here.
Do we need Dave to have a vote?
Um, you do not expect you can hear us?
Is there provision in section eight for that to be done? Uh huh. Section eight.
Do you back?
Ah, there he is.
There he is, okay. Isn't that him up on the upper left?
Becky, can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Oh, there he is.
All right. Um, that's, that's okay, we gotta boil this down, um, for any recommendations, uh, or highlights we want for the applicant to bring in on, on the site too. Or on, on the CAT two site plan when that comes in. Uh, what do, what do you think a motion might look like?
Um, well, I think first thing, you withdraw the prior approval, uh, June twenty seventh, um. And the motion would be to um, to tell me, I'm assuming they can move forward with the, uh, with the CAT two, um, site plan. Based on the schematic design submitted to July fourteenth, is that correct? That the understanding?
I think so, I, I think we want him to, um, with some, uh, make sure he highlights, uh, okay, so I was thinking, we want to make sure he, uh, defines the height. Uh, roof height and decorative piece, and then defines his site, especially in terms of defines a site with regard to any setbacks. I mean, that's, when you look at what's in a site for a CAT two, it's all in there anyway, but I think that's what I heard from sites discussions. We want to make sure that we define the height for the, uh, zone, and then we also make sure we define this, any setback requirements for the zone.
My question to you is, what we have in this plan acceptable to you? Yeah, as, as long as we cite what the dimension is.
That's, uh, the, yeah, we would be saying, yes, this goes forward, we want you to emphasize two items besides all the other compliance you have to do.
And there's six dash two oh two is the category two, so you could say that you wanted to highlight those specifically, but that the site plan be presented that fulfills six dash two oh two. Required informational category two site plans.
Is it TAC two oh two, or what's
Six, six two oh two.
Yeah, okay, got it.
I think the more information you provide, the better, clearly without having a south elevation to look at. Um, now, I don't know if you have any dormers, let me look at the roof plan real quick.
He has one at the entrance, it looks like.
You just have one as opposed to one, two, three, four, five on the north side, so just kind of I get, you know, there's cost implications to doing things like that, but I'm just a little concerned that that south side uh, and the east side. They're just gonna look a little little bare, and that's off, I mean, that's, that's gonna be very highly visible off of Chesapeake Avenue. So, uh, we'll look at it again when it comes back.
Okay, so we're gonna need a motion.
All right, well, before I make the motion, just let me, uh, let me talk it. And is it, is it appropriate to make sure that we address the prior approval and withdraw that? Then important to do, Rick, do you think? I, I don't even know what was in that, I know there was an approval given, but at this point, there's no bubbles on this drawing to tell me what has changed. I didn't go back and look at the prior, other than the second floor is gone. You know, if there's anything else associated with, so I would just soon say, we withdraw the prior approval of June twenty seventh and approve as submitted, even though this one is not dated. Uh, the submission date is July fourteenth.
Just say that this approval supersedes the prior approval without an actual withdrawal, which might protect the status quo, the status quo to some extent. If anything happens. I feel about this one.
Oh, okay. Meeting date or what's on the app?
I'm sorry.
Should we use the meeting day tonight, or should, the application says seven fourteen, should we use that? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Meeting day, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
You catch that, Steve?
What was it the?
Uh, we'll go with today's meeting date, um, would, would be your superseding, so this, the, the request in today, uh, on the twenty fourth, uh, supersedes previous application.
Yep.
Right, the motion will be to approve to approve the current application. And the impact of that approval will be the, that it's sorry, I can come up with a better way to say that.
You want the date on this one?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think it matters, well, actually, it will be, that will make the record specific.
Four twenty three, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so if there is a
The last one was
The last one
Well, that was last year, that's right.
Yeah, this one, it's in my staff report, certainly, it was.
June twenty seven, twenty twenty four.
Yes.
Of the previous.
If there is a motion to approve the application, the current application, whatever the date is. Motion will be to to approve the application dated whenever the current application date is, with the effect of superseding the prior approval dated, whenever the date you just gave me was.
You got me.
Okay, okay, uh, we'd make a motion to approve the permit submission meeting date seven twenty four, twenty five with uh, stipulations that the, uh, category two site plan required, but have emphasis of, uh, defining the roof height. Uh, site category and setbacks and compliance with six TAC two zero two. And this approval will supersede previous approval from six, seven, twenty four. Let me get the day wrong.
Six twenty seven.
Six twenty seven.
Second?
All in favor? I.
Steve, are you there?
Hello, can you see me? Hello?
We can hear you now, I, we were taking a phone. Hi, did you hear?
I saw.
All right, hi, okay, good.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble here.
That's okay, we got you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we had some technical difficulties, but no problem.
That's my wife.
Oh, nice. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Okay, um, the next item would be the comprehensive plan update, we talked about that real quick.
Yeah, so I was hoping to have the completed rough draft for you all tonight, uh, to look at prior to giving it to, uh, council, uh, I should have that done and completed, it probably won't be prettied up with charts and pictures, uh, state says they do not need all of that. Um, but I want to get the completed rough draft. Um but I want to get the completed rough draft done within the next ten days so that I can send that to council and. PC so that we can send that to the state to get the sixty day window started. So that we can give the final approval before the end of the year.
What's what's the turnaround on comments for us? Do we have a week to? We want a week before it gets to council, right?
Yeah, well, you guys will end up having to combine meeting with the council.
Okay.
I don't know how long the state's comments will take. I have been able to get. The critical area commission to review that portion prior to us finishing the rough draft. So. Once it goes to DNR, it should be quick. Um there shouldn't be any changes from them or comments. And Urban Department of Housing has also looked at it, did not have any comments. Uh most of the new legislation that was passed this year will not be required for us to. Address. We will be able to. Put a header in that addresses why most of what we have already addresses it. We won't have to do any of the others until another ten years.
Okay.
So I think we're going to be in good shape. September, October to be. Come close to done.
So it goes to the state and then it comes back and then redo the joint hearing?
Yeah. Yeah, gotta go to the state sixty day. The state has to do their review sixty days prior to. The joint hearing for a week.
Any format for comments? You send it to your Word doc or just in the email or whatever?
Yeah, email is fine. Um. You've incorporated all the comments up till now have been put in. Um. I'm just going to go back through everything I met with him. Yesterday, so.
Remember, when does the council get? After it's gone to state comments?
So they have to have this. The state has to do their review sixty days prior to. Uh the council. Having their open meeting with joint session with. Planning Commission. So I'm going to send copies of the rough draft out to everyone. Send it to the state to get that review process started. If council has changes they want to make, we can still do that. But the sixty day window is is a big thing. And then even if the state has additional comments or they want changes or we add additional. Comments from the council, we send it back to the state. It's not. It doesn't take sixty days. You can just send back the changes that you've made. They don't have to review the whole plan. Uh we're shooting for September. I'm thinking it's probably going to be October.
Yeah, you haven't sent the document to state.
Yeah, it would be October.
Well, I think that's all the uh agenda items. Does anybody have anything else? We have a motion to adjourn?
Uh maybe we adjourn the meeting?
We have second. How second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Becky said aye.
Okay. All right, we're good.